Hello and welcome. My name is Ashley Scherrard and I'm the CEO of the Lenexa Chamber of Commerce and it's my honor to moderate today's forum featuring the Lenexa City Council Ward Two candidates. On behalf of the Lenexa Chamber and the Johnson County Public Policy Council, a collaboration of all 10 area local chambers of commerce, thank you for joining us. I'd like to first begin by sharing the format for our forum today, which will include two-minute opening statements by the candidates, a moderated question and answer period during which candidates will each have one and a half minutes to respond, followed at the end by one-minute closing statements. The format, questions, and time limits will be the same for both candidates, and there will be no follow-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. Candidate speaking order has been randomly determined with the candidates and will rotate throughout the program. First, I'll briefly introduce our candidates in alphabetical order with a reminder that this is a nonpartisan race. First, incumbent candidate Bill Nix has lived in Lenexa for more than 35 years and was first elected to serve as Ward Two council member in 2017, being re-elected in 2021. Before running for office, he served 29 years as Lenexa's first Parks and Recreation Director and continues to provide history talks. He earned degrees from Washburn University and the University of Kansas after serving in the U.S. Army. Learn more about Bill's background and other civic involvement at his website, www.nixforward2.com. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you.
Candidate Nicole Wasson was born and raised in the Lenexa and Shawnee area and attended Shawnee Mission Schools. After earning her degree from the University of Kansas, she began a more than two-decade career in corporate consulting specializing in software implementation and project management. You can learn more about Nicole's background at her website, www.nicoleforlenexa.com. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you.
We're going to begin with opening statements by the candidates. Candidates will have two minutes each to present opening statements. Based on our draw for random speaking order, we're going to begin opening statements with Nicole.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for those that are present as well as those that are watching online. My name is Nicole Wasson. I'm ready for Lenexa City Council Ward Two. In terms of a little bit of background about me and why I've decided to run, both my father and my grandfather were very civic-minded and very involved in their communities. And as my father passed, I started thinking about how I could contribute back to the community. I began as an election worker, did that for several years, and then became a supervising judge for one of the polling locations. In addition to kind of this feeling of community service, I love Lenexa. I was born and raised here. I grew up here. I've seen the changes over the years, and I know that in my heart I can do more for Lenexa. As my life has shifted and my career movement has changed, I've also looked for different ways in which I can serve, which has prompted me to run for city council for Lenexa. In terms of kind of my priorities, and I know we may get into that as a question as well, I have kind of three primary focuses, one of which is fiscal responsibility. Kansans are pragmatic. Everybody wants our government to work. We want those services to be available when we need them, and we need realistic people who are running for city council that are being the voices of those living in the resident districts. So it is my conclusion, at least at this point, that I would like to represent Ward Two for the city of Lenexa and be the voice for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Bill?
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this event. My wife Marcie and I raised our three children here in Lenexa. We had an awful lot of help. We had Great American Basketball League and 3-2 Baseball, Miller-Marley Dance Studio, Theater in the Park, Holy Trinity Church, and Shawnee Mission Schools, Johnson County Girls Athletic Association. So we are embedded in the community with all of our children and the eight grandchildren that have come to us through those three. So I too, like Nicole, love Lenexa. I've served on eight years with the city council. Prior to that, I was the first Parks and Recreation Director for Lenexa, saw my first rattlesnake out west of Lenexa, first one in the wild, walking potential parks. As Ashley mentioned, I served three years in the United States Army and then went to Washburn and KU on the GI Bill. I do a lot of historical reenactments. I do five characters. I also do bus tours. Four of my characters are inspirational: James Naismith, Lenexa's own octave shanood, Ike Eisenhower, Wilbur Wright. But one of them, one of them is not inspirational. I do him as a warning, Boss Tom Pendergast. I do him as a warning to pay attention to your town. I think history not only inspires us, it warns us, but it informs us on how to look at decisions that will affect the future. So I'm running for Ward Two and just glad to be here today. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, both. We're now ready for the moderated question-answer portion of the forum. As a reminder, candidates will have one and a half minutes each to respond, and the speaking order will rotate with each question. Following with our speaker rotation, Bill, you'll answer first on this question. And question number one, can you please tell us more about what your top three policy goals would be as a Lenexa City Council member going forward?
Well, safety is, I think, safety has got to be top priority. I don't care how green your grass is in the parks, if it's not safe, you know? So police, fire, EMS, traffic, the city, the whole community has to be safe. Another top priority, orderly development, how we balance residential, how we balance commercial, how we preserve open natural space, how we worry about rezonings and the surrounding areas to those rezonings. And finally, building community. I think we can be tempted to be divided. I think we can be tempted to be isolated. And together, as I, I mean, Lenexa is 12 miles wide. It's 12 miles wide. We need to intentionally try to pull together, work together, because there are a lot of temptations to separate. So those are, would be my top priorities.
Thank you, Bill. And now we're going to turn to Nicole. I know you touched on this in your opening, but if you would like to elaborate on your top three policy goals as a Lenexa City Council member?
Absolutely. So fiscal responsibility, again, that's a standard one. And whether, no matter who you are, I don't think anybody's going to decide, hey, I don't want to be, you know, not be responsible with the community's money. So from that goes from everywhere, from property taxes to the budgets. There are a lot of hot topic items that we face in Lenexa currently, whether it is your concern that you can't age in place in your home because your property taxes are going to rise and you're going to fixed income. There are just so many factors that go into that. My voice wasn't heard. I wasn't allowed to, you know, impart information related to a particular project. We want to be the vehicle that allows the community to come together, just the unity that Bill was talking about, and really meet the goals that are for the future together. Economic growth, as a small business owner myself, I want to focus on growth and development that makes sense for Lenexa, because the key here is we need to have the community goals in alignment with the development growth that we're looking to bring in. We need to be very strategic in that regard. And then I want to look to the future in a different way for Lenexa, and that means maintaining and strengthening the community, but that's not just about the parks or the green spaces or the services or the development or the amenities. We need to make sure that we're meeting the new challenges that we're going to have head-on.
Thank you, Nicole. And we're ready for question two. Nicole, you will speak first to this question. What are your views on the services and value the city's citizens receive for their local tax dollars?
Absolutely. Thank you. Lenexa continues to provide really quality services. The reason why we people want to live here is because this is a growing community. There are people that are actively invested in the community and growing the community, whether it's the spinach market, whether it's the farmer's market, whether it's Soco Park skating rink, whether it's the pool that I actually was at for the first time in 20-plus years this year, this summer. I went to the pool to check out the lazy river. All of these things are very important. We continue to provide and see the value for the services that we have. I think the continuing issue is that there are strategic moves that the city wants to make that not everybody's on the same page about. And so bringing everybody together with the answers of why we're doing what we're doing, how we're going to accomplish the goal, and what the impact is to you is very important to all the residents.
Thank you, Nicole. And to Bill, what are your views on the services and value the city's citizens receive for their local tax dollars?
I agree that the residents think they receive great value for their taxes. We do a survey every two years in Lenexa, and it's not a question survey that the city council puts together trying to lead people to the answer they want. It is professionally done, professionally administered every two years, and the results of that, we score tremendously high in the services that are offered to the residents of Lenexa. And the question on value for your taxes rates very high also. Not only do the city employees provide wonderful services and do it in the right way, they do the right things. Many of our departments are credited by professional organizations like the fire department. Not only do they provide good services, but they do it in the correct way. Stephen Covey taught us that, you know, years ago, taught us that, hey, you're painting that house really great. Trouble is, it's the wrong house. Okay, so, I mean, they do it the right way, and they're doing it the great services, and people recognize that in Lenexa.
Thank you, Bill. We're going to stick with you for question number three. What changes, if any, would you like to see to the city budget?
I think we should look at, looking at our capital improvement program concurrently with our operating budget. I think that would, in many ways, help the residents see how we prioritize some of our projects as it relates to capital improvement program and also the operating budget. I think we should look at broadening the pool of potential applicants for property tax rebate. We have a good one now, that some of the factors are veterans disability, age of the homeowner, age of the house, and we could tweak those factors to make the pool broader. Also, we could look at tagging along with the state's Homestead Act, which affects property taxes and rebased property taxes. You know, the value of a home in Lenexa is vastly different than value of a home in other parts of Kansas, and so we could tag along with that.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. And to Nicole, what changes, if any, would you like to see to the city budget?
Well, our city budget was recently passed, and I think everybody acknowledges that Lenexans feel that this is being spent wisely. They passed the sales tax again in order to continue that. So there are key things that I think that a lot of people find good in working correctly in the way that we're budgeting currently. I think there are some targeted areas, just like Bill mentioned. I agree with him completely on the rebate program. I think that the eligibility criteria does need to be targeted a little bit better. In addition to that, I think also we need to look at some of the tax abatements and some other things that we maybe took a different approach of in the past, but we need to realize that potentially we don't have to offer those same kind of discounts to be a part of our community. If you value our community, your goals are aligned with our community, you want to be here anyway, let's target some businesses that are going to bring in that growth that we need but are actively coming after it without asking also for the same kind of reduction in tax abatements.
Thank you, Nicole, and you will have the first answer on question number four. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to the community?
Absolutely. So thank you for that question. The policy is really kind of set by the city council. So there's a direct correlation between the policies that are decided and administered and how those businesses respond to that. So in terms of the city council itself, it absolutely plays a role, and it plays a direct role in bringing that capital investment and those jobs. Again, I go back to, we need to be really strategic, and we want the people who want to grow the community with us in the way that our community wants to grow, and those are the ones we should be targeting to go after. So yes, there's absolutely a correlation. The city council does play directly in getting that growth and jobs.
Thank you, Nicole. And to Bill, what role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development bringing jobs and capital investment to the community?
Yes, we should continue to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce in attracting new business and also retaining and supporting the businesses that we have. Lenexa has always enjoyed a great business climate, and the partnership that the city has with the chamber has just made that better and stronger over the years. One of the overarching topics of Vision 2040, which I was one of the city council, Dan Rowe and I were city council liaisons on 2040 Visioning Project, one of the main topic areas was the thriving economy and economic development certainly plays a huge part in that. Now, as for when we negotiate incentives with businesses, we should make sure that we're encouraging a diverse economy, that it makes jobs, but we should also make sure that we establish benchmarks so that those incentives are hit and that the company receiving them understands those benchmarks.
Thank you, Bill. And we will stick with you as our first respondent to question number five. As the city considers future development and redevelopment projects, describe your views on how the city should best manage and balance growth.
I think the first thing we should do is follow the comprehensive plan. That's our best guess of what we hope Lenexa to be and to become. It is established with open houses, meetings with residents, meetings with our volunteer city boards, the planning commission, the Parks and Recreation Board, and it's how we plan to develop that, that five miles north and south and 12 miles east and west, and how we keep our natural areas and keep our high quality of life as we develop. We should continue to reinvest in the established parts of Lenexa. We need a mix of housing options, low-density apartments, single-family residential. I also, as I mentioned earlier, we need to be careful of rezoning. When we have the comprehensive plan, we have drawn lines on a map that individuals and businesses have made decisions on. And so when we are asked to rezone something, then we need to pay special attention to the areas surrounding that particular parcel.
Thank you, Bill. And to Nicole, as the city considers future development and redevelopment, describe your views on how the city should best manage and balance that growth.
Absolutely. So making sure that we're meeting the community needs and the goals while working to achieve new goals is definitely how we're going to get to that path. But how we prioritize the city needs is going to come into play. So this is of critical importance, especially when Bill was talking about how long or wide Lenexa is, right? This is a lot of ground to cover. So we don't want anyone in the older historical section of Lenexa to feel that no money's being spent in there in the area, or that they are not getting the same attention of the new city-centered area, right? So there's a balance that has to be played in order to continue to make sure that we're not only managing growth, but we're looking at how we can be different. So I understand that the plans from, whether it's the city council or whether it's from the planning committee, they were established, and that growth is important, that we proceed along those lines, but at the same time, it doesn't mean we can't stop and reevaluate. It can't, it doesn't mean that we can't look at Lenexa and say, is this still right for our future? Is this still the path we want to go down? And I think that that's what I can help bring to the table.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
We will stay with you for our first response to question number six.
Okay.
What is your philosophy on the role the city should play in terms of metro area issues?
Ah, yes. So this is a great one, and it's one that I think can be maximized. Shawnee faces a lot of the same issues that Lenexa does. Overland Park faces the same issues that Lenexa does. And there are absolutely partnering areas where we need to be maximizing the reactions that we're taking together, and this goes across the board. I'm going to use the homeless shelter as a great example, though. That was a very hot-button issue for Lenexans, and I know everyone cared very passionately about that. I think that that solution in a different light, or maybe joined together with some task force from Shawnee, from Lenexa, from Overland Park, could have been looked at a completely different way. So by not leveraging additional municipalities, I think that we're limiting ourself. We can only grow better in the area holistically, you know, as a group of municipalities if we also are interacting on those key issues that are important to us.
Thank you, Nicole. And now to Bill, what is your philosophy on the role the city should play in metro area issues?
Well, when the metro benefits, we all benefit. Something about rising tides. But we should continue to be at the table, and we should lead when it's appropriate. We, I think we here in Lenexa set the bar awfully high on issues and on services, and so when it's appropriate for us to lead, I think we should. I also think that before we do something, the first question we should ask ourselves is, is it good for Lenexa? Shouldn't just do it because everybody else is doing it, but is it good for Lenexa? And once we answer that question, then yes, we should get in there, pull together, and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And we'll stay with you as our first respondent on question seven. What do you believe are the greatest challenges the city faces over the next 10 years, and how would you address them?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think we're tempted to be isolated, tempted not to pull together. I think pulling together to work on common issues is very important, and it's challenging and will continue to be challenging. We need to stay engaged. We need to stay embedded in the community. I'm glad I like coffee, because I drink a lot of coffee at Revocup and Scooters and Paneras with people who want to tell me what's on their mind. And, I mean, when I was Park and Rec Director, that's, I mean, you just meet with people. Jogging trail going in the backyard, you stand on their deck with them, you know? So I'm used to it, and we, we just need to stay connected like this. We're talking, you see everybody's emotion, you see everybody's inflections, you see how they're using their hands. It's not just, it's not just something behind the typewriter. Another challenge is the diverse housing stock that we need. We hear it constantly. Maybe we need some cottage houses on the bigger lots, and maybe we need in-law units. Maybe those are the same thing. Maybe maintenance provided, smaller, single-family. People want, they love Lenexa. They like Lenexa. They want to stay here and maybe downsize. So pulling together and diverse housing stock, challenges.
Thank you, Bill. And turning to Nicole, what do you see as the greatest challenges the city faces over the next 10 years, and how would you like to see them addressed?
I think one of the biggest challenges we're going to face is growth in Lenexa, and how do we do it appropriately? How do we do it so that everybody still maintains the sense of community? I think that, you know, as we've discussed, we really care about parks and green spaces and trails and our amenities, and we want to ensure that we've got the proper ratio. And I think the city council has done a really great job of ensuring that those public spaces exist, that they are being maintained, that they're being managed, and that when growth is planned, they are planning for those spaces as well. The priority for me is going to be overall also ensuring that the economic growth and development that needs to occur for Lenexa to continue to grow, to continue to bring those jobs, to have restaurants and amenities that everyone wants to go to and experience and participate in, needs to be supported with that community goal alignment. And I know I've kind of said that in a couple of my answers, but that is one of those critical items to me, that we need to make sure that we're setting ourself up for success in the future as we grow at the speed that we're going to.
Thank you, Nicole. And we come to our final question of the Q&amp;A portion of the forum, and Nicole, we'll stick with you. What do you believe makes you uniquely qualified to serve in this position and most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
Thank you for that question. So I have over 20 years working with large-scale companies, helping them to solve their problems, and we're talking huge companies, AMC Theaters, a company that is extremely large. And the challenges that they've experienced while they're trying to find a best path forward, as I've done the software implementation, is key to, it kind of just feeds right into this. So thinking outside of the box, looking at the priorities of the business, helping them to prioritize, helping them to find new efficiencies. One of the things that I actually find very stimulating to myself is, if I ask someone, well, why are you doing that this way? And they're not able to provide an answer for me, then that is the opportune item to kind of look at, say, maybe we need to look at how we're doing this, why we're doing this, and do it a little differently. Maybe that is our key to efficiency to move us forward. So from my career, I have had success after success of this, and I think those are skills that can really kind of help me give Lenexa a fresh look and a fresh outlook as we move to the future.
Thank you, Nicole. Now we'll turn to Bill. What do you believe makes you uniquely qualified to serve in this position and most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
Thank you, Ashley. I think my experience and my willingness to engage with residents and volunteer boards and fellow council members and a willingness to study a question, speak my own mind, vote my own mind. I think my study and learning from history helps inform me on the future and how we look at issues. And I know Ward Two, I watched it grow up from crop fields and cropland to the great subdivisions and the schools and the businesses and the trails and the parks and the ticks and the snakes and everything that we have that we enjoy today here in Lenexa. And I have a passion for Lenexa. Marcie and I raised our family here, and there's eight grandchildren underfoot that those kids are raised in, in sports theater, schools, church. We like Lenexa, and we want to help keep it great.
Thank you, both. That concludes our Q&amp;A portion of the forum, and we're going to turn to closing statements by the candidates. They'll each have one minute apiece to present their closing statements, and they will be given in reverse order of opening. So Bill, I'll turn it over to you for your closing statement.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you.
Oh, absolutely. My pleasure.
Been great. Once again, thank you to Ashley and to the chamber for hosting this conversation. I've seen a lot of great things happen in Lenexa over the years, and I'm proud to have played a part in some of those things. I like Lenexa, and I am proud of Lenexa. My name is Bill Nix, and I'm running for Lenexa City Council in Ward Two. Please feel free to visit my website to learn more about me at www.nixforward2.com, and please make a plan to vote for me on November 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. And we'll now turn to Nicole for your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, everyone, for giving us the time this afternoon, and thanks to my opponent as well, Bill, for entertaining the questions that we did today. I think ultimately it comes down to the fact that Lenexans are lucky. It's very clear that both Bill and I are passionate about this, that we care about our community, that we care about what's coming for Lenexa and how we help them forward in the future. So as you look at the history that I have with the career consulting, as you think about how I've helped companies with those efficiencies and then process improvements and looking at things a different way, keep me in mind for, is this the person I want to represent for my voice for Lenexa Ward Two? Thank you.
Nicole, that concludes our Lenexa City Council Ward Two forum. Let's thank our candidates for participating in today's program. On behalf of the Lenexa Chamber of Commerce and our colleagues... On behalf of the Lenexa Chamber of Commerce and our colleague local chambers, thank you for taking advantage of this important opportunity to learn about the candidates. For more information about candidates countywide, videos of other candidate forums, and advance voting details, visit www.votejoko.com. And please share this voter resource with your colleagues, family, and friends.